...if we can all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I get, I don't have any announcements before me. Does anybody on the board have an announcement before we begin? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Some of them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's curious. In our packets, we have the Board of Ed meeting minutes from the meeting on October fifteenth, along with executive session. If there's no questions on that, if I could have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. We have no correspondence of note this evening. This brings us to our first public comments session of the evening of two. If anybody has anything to add right now, again, we do have one later on. Get to the matter at hand here. Any unfinished business for the board before we get to the superintendent's report? All right, Dr. Hicks?
I'm going to start with Mr. Kuick. You're on, Mr. Kuick, with your kids. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Today, we're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the flexible seating we have in classrooms at Ledgeview. So, we're really excited to do that, and I'm very grateful for my friends here who are willing to do it. You know, whenever you go to a student as the principal and say, "Hey, Keegan, I have a favor to ask you." You hope they're not saying yes just because you're the principal, but these kids were all super excited and pumped, and thank you to their parents for bringing them out and rearranging your schedules. But they all were kids who were chosen because they have something passionate about, that they want to share with you about how they use this, so I'm kind of excited for that. So, we've got a bunch of examples of flexible seating. A lot of the stuff you see on the ground, which they'll talk to you about a little bit, was donated through the PTO. We had a walkathon last spring. It was called the Movement for Improvement, and it used to fund a lot of this stuff. And actually, some of this stuff is just teacher stuff that they've gotten on their own as well. But we've got a lot of neat offerings for kids, and we're experimenting with a lot of it this year to see what works, what doesn't work as well, what we want to invest more in. As well as, the district supplied us with stand-up, sit-down desks. So, this year, we have four full classrooms that are outfitted completely with these stand-up, sit-down desks that the board has today. And the neat thing about it is they're all in fourth and fifth grades, so every fourth and fifth grader will have at least one class, because they switch teachers, will have at least one class a day where they will have access and will use their own stand-up, sit-down desk. So, these are some fifth graders wheel them down at the end of the day for you, and they were excited, and they said, you know, "Can we leave our stuff in there?" And I said, "Sure, they can see." So, you can see what a typical fifth grade, what fifth graders keep in their desks as they go through it. We have a bunch of photos. Hopefully, you've been kind of noticing them as you came in and peeked. But these are just pictures I snapped when I walk around. Most of them, the kids didn't even know I was taking them. It's really neat when you really, really look at the picture. You can really see how this stuff can impact kids, and they use this without thinking anything about it, and you don't even really notice it. It's kind of, kind of becomes second nature to all the kids, so it's really neat. You know, this, you know, be sure to check this out throughout the evening, because it's really cool to see it in action and how the kids really use it and how it really impacts their learning. Because really, the key for flexible seating, it's not, you know, you can just put this in a room and everything is transformed instantaneously, but the impact it has on teaching. You know, if you have teachers who are using this stuff and using it to maximize what it's meant to be used for, it really reflects on their teaching, and it's really impressive to see. So, our six students are going to each talk to you tonight. They're each going to tell you one of the benefits of flexible seating, and then they're also going to tell you a little bit about their experiences. And some of them are going to jump right in there and kind of show you what they use on a daily basis at our school. So, I'd like to begin by introducing Chase.
Good evening. My name is Chase, and I am in fifth grade. One benefit of flexible seating is student's choice. Students learn best when they have some control over their environment. Flexible seating allows students to choose where they work and with whom. It also allows students to change their location and position as if needed. I'm using a stand-up, sit-down desk, just like you have tonight. It lets me stretch my legs while I am working. When I'm writing, I'll often use a surf desk like this. This is how I use it to give me a better working platform throughout the room. I like doing my writing with a surf desk on the carpet.
Good evening. My name is Holly, and I am in fifth grade. Another benefit of flexible seating is movement. It is no secret that children need to move. When children cannot move, they become distracted or worse, disruptive. Flexible seating allows students to bounce, lean, twist, kick, fidget, wobble, roll, stand, kneel, and sit to suit their needs. I enjoy using cushions on the floor. Here are several examples. I like to use this in Miss Hastings' classroom. I often like to use my desk on the chair. I also sometimes use a carpet on the floor. Many times, I stand up during Miss Hastings' lessons. This lets me move around a bit and helps me to concentrate. I will also unlock the wheels when I'm moving my desk to work with a classmate. These are options when we use our desk in Miss Hastings' room. Green stands for stand and move, and I lock the wheels when I get there. Yellow means stand and stay, and I lock my wheels. And red means sit and stay, and then I lock the wheels.
Good evening. My name is Grace, and I am in fifth grade. A third benefit of flexible seating is building community. A traditional desk can make students territorial or possessive over their space and supplies. Flexible seating encourages children to share space and supplies. It also encourages them to take turns in different locations with different seating options. In my class, during group work, we can easily roll our desks since they have wheels to work with our partner or group. It lets us move around and use different space within the room. This way, we do not have to work at someone else's desk. I also enjoy using wobble stools such as these during online classwork.
Good evening. My name is Roshan, and I am in fifth grade. An additional benefit of flexible seating is student comfort. When students are uncomfortable, they are distracted and unproductive. Flexible seating allows students to find comfortable positions throughout the classroom. Comfortable students are calm, focused, and productive. I enjoy using many different types of seating. In some classes, I sit in, I sit in a chair with a cushion. In math class, I regularly sit or kneel on a spriggy ergo chair. Like this. In other classes, I'll use a fitness ball when I'm working. Like this, and this, and this. Finally, I sometimes sit in seats with bouncy bands. Like this. They allow me to keep my feet during class.
Good evening. My name is Keegan Floss, and I am in fourth grade. Another benefit of flexible seating is student collaboration. Students learn better when they have a chance to work together. Traditional desks and rows isolate students from each other. Flexible seating allows students to easily pair up, work in small groups, or discuss as a whole class. In September, our teacher had us try all different types of flexible seating. I wrote down my two favorite types of seating that work best for me when I'm writing or reading. I prefer using a red cushion chair like this. I can open it to different settings to make me more comfortable while I am working. I use it for both reading and writing. My other choice was this red rocker that allows me to work while rocking. We can pick different types of seating each month. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gianna, and I am in fourth grade. An additional benefit of flexible seating is sensory input. Many flexible seating options stimulate students' sense of touch. This type of stimulation can help children focus and process information. Sensory input is helpful for many students. I love working in blue rockers like this. They help me focus while I am rocking. Also, I regularly write on a surf desk like this while kneeling. Or like one of these, or these. Oftentimes, I stand up at my desk and work while standing up. I love having so many flexible seating options available. Thank you very much for listening to our presentation. We hope you learned of some of the benefits of flexible seating in schools. Have a nice evening.
You all did an awesome job. They were a little nervous with all the people here today, but you did an awesome job. Does anybody have any questions for our fourth and fifth graders at all?
Not a, not a question, but I'm a big fan of stand-up desks. I use them all the time. So, I would say it's, it's also good for adults with bad backs.
Great job, Ledgeview students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's some seniors that want flexible seating now. Thanks very much, Mr. Kuick. Shall, shall we pause here and give the kids and their moms and dads a chance to exit? Thank you. Next presentation is the annual presentation on test results and data provided by our Director of Curriculum, Mrs. Overhold. So, you are on, Mrs. Overhold.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Tonight, I will provide to the Board of Education an overview of the performance of students on the grades three through eight math and ELA assessments. Starting with overall proficiency for grades three through five in the area of English and Language Arts. Before I get started, I just want to kind of point out a few things in the graphic. These are stacked bar graphs. So, what you'll see is, it's difficult to see due to the lighting, but the level fours here is indicated in a dark green. Level threes in yellow, level twos in blue, and then level ones in light green. The numbers on each of the graphs indicate the overall number of students proficient at that particular grade level. Thank you very much. And at the very top, what you'll see is the overall percentage of students proficient. And that would be students scoring a level three or a level four on the assessment. So, as we take a look at the four-year trend for English Language Arts at grades three through five, what we see is an overall increase in the percentage of students proficient. When we take a look at the level fours, we see a slight increase. As well as taking a look at level threes, we see a more pronounced increase in the students scoring a level three from 2017. At forty percent to 2018, we had forty-eight students, forty-eight percent of students, rather, score a level three. What we also take note of is the fact that we have a decrease in the number of students scoring at the level two as well as level one. When we take a look at proficiency by level by building, we note that when we take a look at level threes, we are pretty consistent in terms of the percentage of students scoring at a level three. And also at level two, again, we see consistency. We see more variation in the number of level fours as well as the number of level ones. We take a look at the performance at grades three through five for math. Again, this is a four-year trend. Like with ELA, we see an increase in students at level proficiency. Again, this past year, 2018, we had overall eighty-four percent of students scored proficiency level. What was significant also to note is that from 2017 to 2018, we had a pretty significant increase in the percentage of level fours from thirty-eight percent to fifty-one percent. We also saw a decrease in level threes. This could be likely due to a number of those level threes moving up to level four. Like with ELA, we also saw a decrease and continue to see a decrease over the four years in the level, number of level twos as well as the number of level ones. And when we look at performance by level by building, again, we see consistency at level three in terms of the percentage of students scoring at that range. But again, more variation in terms of the number of, or percentage of students scoring at a level four as well as level one and two. So, when we take a look at the middle school, similar trend to that of the elementaries. We see an overall increase in, in proficiency, again, over the four years. Last year, quite a jump, ten percent more students proficient in 2017 to 2018. Thirteen percent more students scored a level four. We saw a decline again in level threes, again, likely to a number of those level threes moving up a level in the subsequent years. We also see a decline in the number of level twos from 2017 to 2018. And that, again, we likely can contribute a number of those level twos moving up to a level three. The number of level ones here, the percentage has seen, stayed relatively consistent over the last three years. And when we take a look at math, the percentages have remained pretty consistent, though we do see an increase in proficiency here over the last four years. When we look at the percentage performing at each, at each level, it's pretty consistent, again, around twenty-one, twenty-two percent at level four. Around, you see a jump in level threes, five percent more students scored at a level three. We saw a decline in level twos and a slight increase in level ones. When we take a look at the overall special ed performance, we do see an increase in students performing at proficiency over the last four years. From 2017 to 2018, we did have five percent more students scoring proficiency. So, again, we see that upward trend. We see a slight decline in the number of level twos, and level ones have stayed consistent at forty-seven percent. However, that is quite a decrease from three years ago when we had sixty percent of students scoring at a level one. That's students with disabilities. And again, for math, a slight increase we see in students performing with proficiency. We had a two percent increase of students scoring a level three or a level four. We had a slight drop in the number of level twos, and again, remaining pretty consistent with the number of level ones. When we take a look at the refusal rates over the course of the last six years, we found a pretty interesting trend. Over the last four years, well, I should say, four years ago, we started to notice this upward trend in the number of students refusing to take the, the ELA assessment in grades three through eight. This is, again, overall, for, overall percentage for students in grades three through eight. But last year, we saw a dip. We saw a drop in that, and we had ten percent more students taking the assessment in grades three through eight. With a different trend with math, we've actually seen the number of refusals or the percentage of refusals decline over the last four years. This past year, 2017, eighteen, we did have the lowest percentage of refusals for math, and that was the lowest since 2013, fourteen. This is taking a look at refusal by grade level. So, this is, again, three through eight. This past year, and this is just for 2018, what's interesting is that in previous years, we actually saw a trending upward in grades three, four, five, and then a similar pattern happening at the middle school in grades six, seven, eight. Last year, we actually have a dip in grade five. So, that is an interesting trend, and it actually is a similar trend we'll see with the mathematics as well. Again, when we get into sixth grade, six, seven, eight, we'll then see this upward trend of students refusing the ELA assessment. When we take a look at math, again, we see that similar pattern as we did with the ELA. We actually had more students taking the math assessment. Only nine percent refused at grade five, but again, a similar trend with the ELA, that the number of students refusing increases as we go up grade level.
So, those two, those two numbers, I mean, if I'm looking at that, I'm, I'm, the way I'm interpreting it is there's a cohort of parents and students that have gotten, either they strongly feel or they've gotten into the habit of refusing, and to a certain extent, they're just aging up through this, through the system, and maybe some of our younger students don't have that same habit. Is that a fair way to view it?
Absolutely. We will be taking a close look at that cohort this year in sixth grade. That is, actually, I looked at that group in particular. They have been on the downward trend since third grade. Here's a look at the gen ed population refusals versus the special ed population. Again, what this graphic is telling us is that our special ed population is twice as likely to refuse the assessment. But what's interesting, again, is to note that we do, again, see this downward trend, both, both for special ed as well as general ed, education students, and that we have seen quite a dip from, from 2015, sixteen, with fifty-one percent of students refusing to take the test to thirty-seven percent this past year. Next, what we'll take a look at is our overall performance by grade level as a regional comparison. So, what we're looking at here will, are the top ten districts according to business first. So, second in is, it's quite difficult to see here, but Clarence is always going to be positioned in the same spot. So, second from the left. So, third grade for proficiency, we ranked first among those districts at eighty-two percent proficient. For fourth grade ELA, we ranked second among those districts at seventy-six percent. For grade five ELA, we ranked first. For grade six, we ranked fourth. For grade seven ELA, we ranked first, sixty-eight percent proficient. And grade eight, we ranked fifth. And when we take a look at mathematics, similar for ELA, grade three, we ranked first. Eighty-six percent students reached proficiency. At fourth grade, again, first, eighty percent students scored a proficiency. For fifth grade, first, eighty-four percent proficiency. For sixth grade, we ranked third, technically second here for proficiency. For seventh grade, we were fourth. And for eighth grade, we ranked sixth. However, over one-third of our eighth grade population takes the Common Core Algebra exam, and that, that the performance of those students is not indicated in this analysis.
So, I, I saw a trend on the ELA that I didn't see here, that fifth grade, like, across the board, the proficiency levels in fifth grade were lower than the previous grades. I mean, is there something that happens in that grade or just recently happened in that grade where, like, was the test unusually difficult? Or was there a transition in the curriculum or?
Generally, when we see across the region, all of the, the levels really were about the same, at that sixty, fifty-five, sixty percent proficiency. One could conclude that the assessment at that grade level could be more
Just more difficult.
Difficult, yes. So, that concludes my presentation. So, at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Kristin, those grade students that take the, the Algebra exam, the Regents course, you don't have them taking the eighth grade math assessment as well?
That is correct. They do not.
We had the chance to make that decision about four or five years ago, and we thought it was silly to double test the kids. So, we don't have them take the eighth grade. We just have them take the Regents exam, which is the more difficult test.
That's correct. We also do not double test for eighth grade science. So, those students taking Earth science would only take the Earth Science Regents exam.
What's the percentage of kids taking the Earth Science part of the study?
A little bit higher than the Algebra, so it's probably closer to fifty percent of those, of the population takes. We have classes this year taking Earth science.
Overall, very positive trends.
Yes.
I know in the past, when we've talked about scoring year over year as it relates to the state, they have a tendency to, I guess, adjust the rigor of the exam from year to year. So, I guess, do we have a sense as we see the jump up this last year? I know we're still doing well relative to our peers, which is very positive, but
Sure.
the amount of the jump, I guess, was that seen across the region as well or?
Yes. So, yeah, there was, I don't know if the, the performance was as significant as what we're seeing specifically, but the overall trend was there was an increase in performance across the state.
So, one of the issues was the number of testing days was down from three to two. So, the entire test had to be re-scaled. And that was one reason for the jump. But when we jumped higher than most other school districts, we also want to attribute part of the jump to good teaching and learning.
That's right.
Absolutely. And I guess the other question, just to restate what the state has held us accountable to. The opt-out target is, is five percent. Anything greater than five percent is requiring some
Ninety-five percent participation, correct.
mediation plan on our part, correct?
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristin. Third and last thing on the superintendent's report. We just put a placeholder so that the board could have an open discussion on the disposition of the twenty-two rifles. We had much discussion on this over the last three or four months. The board received a memo from our athletic director, Greg Kazupski, who had collaborated with the rifle coach and the rifle club advisor. His recommendation was to keep ten, the best ten of the cache of rifles. We also included with your packet, the legal opinion. Mr. Mancuso, anything that you want to chime in on this, please?
You know, when you read the legal opinion, the attorneys are saying that if there's value to the remaining rifles, we probably should sell them. I just did a quick analysis from the appraisals that we received. And I don't know anything about the rifles, but what I did was I took the twenty-seven units, and the appraisals were by unit. And I took the ten most expensive ones, saying that most likely the rifles that we would keep. And then I totaled the seventeen remaining ones and added them up. That came to seventeen hundred and seventy dollars. So, again, not that we know for sure, but that would be today, a good estimate of what we might get.
So, Rick, can you just briefly describe if the board decides to sell procedurally? There's, from the legal opinion, a federal firearms dealer?
What we would do is, just like when you buy something and put a bid out, we would put a bid out. We would accept sealed bids at a certain date from somebody who is a federal firearm dealer only. And then we would take those bids, we would analyze them, bring them to the Board of Education for the final disposition.
And just, just to clarify too, with regards to the bids, it wouldn't be until that point in time that we would necessarily take action? It doesn't, soliciting bids doesn't bind us to take action.
Correct. So, certainly, my little analysis of seventeen hundred dollars, if the bids came in and it was three times that or a third of that, it could alter the board's decision.
Now, I know as a board, we took this up for discussion a few months back, and I think it was the collective will of the board to get some feedback from our athletic director and the new advisor, which we did receive. Is there any further comment that's counter or in support of our discussion previously? Is there any further comment that's counter or in support of our discussion previously?
I'm in support of moving this forward and getting this complete weather. We need to vote or have Rick move forward with some bidding, but maybe have a discussion here. Personally, I'm in support of keeping some of the rifles so that the students can use them.
Yeah. I mean, this fits with the conversation that we had last time. And obviously, I'm in favor of it, so.
I agree. Thank you.
We could generate consensus, and I'll move forward with that process. And as soon as we have results, I'll bring it to a subsequent Board meeting.
Do you have any timeframe?
I don't see this for the next Board meeting. I will shoot for the January one.
Okay. Thank you.
In the meantime, can they use the rifles that we have?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
They don't, they don't use the 22's during the rifle season, but they use it during the club season.
Would we let the rifle club then decide on the 10 that they would keep? I mean, you said probably the most expensive, but I would think.
So Mr. Kazupski will meet with them, figure out the 10 that they want. When you sell things, there's always a time when I have to have people come inspect them. So I need to determine the 17 that we would possibly sell so that I would set up a day so that prospective buyers would come in and look at the units.
And he recommended 10 because we have 8?
Yes, because we have 8, and he thought it would be a good idea to have 2 extra.
Okay, that concludes the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Before we move into personnel, just for the record, I failed to note that James Barglioli is not in attendance tonight. Dr. Patak, instructional?
Thank you, Mr. Fuks. You have a number of items before you this evening, including a resignation, an informational item, various appointments, including regular substitute teachers. You also have appointment of mentors for these teachers. Math and ELA tutoring services for our ELL population. Extracurricular, one more time, you have the winter sports agenda with your approval with the addition of a few names that were not there last month. TCI training, presentation compensation, fall curriculum projects, and additions to the substitute teacher list.
Any questions on instructional P1 to P6? If no questions, could I get a motion to approve? Sorry, huh?
Sorry, just a quick question. The TCI training, are those all teachers or do aides get trained as well?
Yes.
Yes, those are all teachers or yes, aides get trained as well?
Both teachers and teacher aides get trained.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I get a motion to approve? You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Non-instructional?
You have notification of death of an employee, a change in status, various appointments, mainly second set of eyes for the swimming seasons, as well as appointment of a school monitor and an informational item, and additions and one deletion to the substitute list.
Questions or comments on P7 to P10? Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Special needs and student activities, Dr.?
For special education, there were 30 committee on special ed, school age meetings. These are really all new referrals. There were five preschool. So this is one of the slower months in October. Nothing unusual.
And we do have one addendum in front of us as well. So this was not in the, on my packet, correct? Can I get a motion to approve items 1 and 2 under special needs and student activities? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Board development?
There's four athletic competitions where the teams are going to stay overnight. Varsity hockey to Rybrook, New York in December. Varsity wrestling to Sheldrick, New York. Boys and girls indoor track to Akron, Ohio. And varsity ice hockey to Potsdam, New York. These are regular competitions.
Does anybody have a question on any of those four? Can I get a motion to approve the four athletic competitions, items B1 to B4? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Fuks, just one last thing. Both our girls and boys soccer teams won the region, sectionals and the regionals, and they both go to the state final four this week, so good luck to them.
What day is that, Dr.?
I believe they play Saturday, and then if they win, they play Sunday. And we've struggled to get a coach bus for them, but we do have it at least one way for the girls and both way for the boys.
Are they going to walk home?
They're going to have a yellow bus on the way home.
Comes to our second public comment session for this evening. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, we have one microphone over here. I don't know if this, does this one work?
Yes.
There's one over here as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to make a comment about rifles. I understand that you cannot keep all of them. However, letting the shooters choose which ones we would like to keep is definitely our best option because I've been using the same rifle for four years now. And losing that rifle would be horrible. I don't think I could just pick up another rifle and keep shooting with it. It would be like giving up my own personal rifle. The rifles that we keep might not be the most expensive ones, but they'll be the ones that we like using, the ones that we're comfortable with. Some of them might be a couple of the newer ones, a couple of the older ones. But letting the team and the club decide is definitely the best option.
Thank you. Is it fair to say that students would benefit? Again, I don't have the list in front of me. It's been a while since I've looked at it. I'm imagining the most expensive are probably a few particular types. That you would benefit from more of a variety of options? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments this evening? Seeing none. The last item in our packet is a meeting, scheduled upcoming meetings. The next regularly scheduled Board meeting will be on December 10th. And that will take place at Harris Hill Elementary at 7:00 PM, followed by our January meeting, which will be at Clarence Center. If there's no other items for the public session, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person.
So move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.